I hereby call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Education for Willmet Public Schools, District 39, this Monday, March 18th, 2024. The time is 7:00 PM. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Erin Stone.
Here.
John Caesaretti.
Here.
Anne Hart.
Here.
Bonnie Kim.
Here.
Allison Pathless.
Here.
Amy Paling.
Here.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Here.
Principal Kate Dominique is here to recognize the Math Counts Competition students, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm Kate Dominique. I'm the principal at Willmet Junior High School across the street. And one of the many clubs that we have as a district and you support is Math Counts. And so, we're grateful to the district and our families for allowing our students to come try out for Math Counts. It's a pretty intensive process. There's a couple rounds of tryouts. I think I'm correct, right? And so then throughout the winter season, our Math Counts students compete. And this year, these students made it to state where they finished 19 out of 37 teams. And just a little tidbit of information, they are all 7th graders. We are so proud of you. I know that your advisor couldn't be here today or your coach, Mrs. Radcliffe, but we're also really grateful to Mrs. Radcliffe for taking on our Math Counts team this year. She's a teacher at High Crest. And now, the students are going to introduce themselves and they're going to share something they love about math or Math Counts.
Hi, my name is Albert and my favorite memory at Math Counts was at the state competition when there were lots of microphone issues.
Hi, my name is Eric and something I love about the Math Counts Club is that we get to work together with other people and learn from other people and also see how like we progressed from like 5th grade to 7th grade and make state.
Hi, my name is Joseph. One thing I like about Math Counts Club is the overall thing because it's fun.
I'm Ava and something I like about Math Counts is working together with other people.
Hi, I'm Sophie and one thing I like about Math Counts is how I can challenge myself to solve harder and harder problems. Ms. Dominique's going to hand out some problems right now. We actually did this problem at our Math Counts and we just wanted to see if you guys could do it.
Now or in general?
Ever.
Are you going to do it along with us? I see there's a whiteboard there so that we can see your work too.
I think they wanted to give you a chance maybe to get started on your own, but yes, they are prepared to walk you through it.
Thank you.
Okay, this is number 25. And in the figure shown, lines L, M, and N are parallel. Given the indicated angle measures, what is the value of t? Yeah.
Um, we should probably draw the diagram first.
This sure is a challenging one. Ms. Dominique, do you have a blank one in your hand? We might be able to hold it up to our computer screen so that members of our audience who are watching from home can admire how really easy the problem is. Let's see if I can do this. Okay, there we go. Could one of you explain to us what you're doing while the other is writing? So I see that you're writing some numbers into the angles. What is it that you're indicating there?
Just drawing the diagram.
Okay, perfect. That's a great start.
Since these two lines, M and N, are parallel, the angles where the cross, the not parallel line intersects M and N are equal. So where this line, let's call that line A, where A intersects with M, that angle would be 16 minus 6 degrees.
Okay, I see that.
Okay, so now we're gonna find the other angle of the triangle that is missing. Since we know that two angles on a line would add up to 180, we can write this last angle as 180 minus 16t plus 1.
I definitely had that written down on my paper right here. I did. I'm not lying. I did.
Um, so then we know that the angles in a triangle add up to 180 degrees. So, okay, you got it right. So we get the equation 11t minus 1 plus 16t plus 6 plus...
Minus 6.
Minus 6, yeah. Plus 180. No, it's 16t. Plus 180 minus 16t plus 1. Equals 180.
Um, after simplifying, one step, we get 11t minus 1 plus 16t minus 16t plus 180 minus 16t minus 1 equals 180. We combine like terms.
What I love most about this is how you all are working together and you clearly are enjoying the work that you're doing as you're doing it, which is so fun to see.
We eventually get 17t minus 16t minus 8 equals 0. So then we get t equals 8. Who else got that?
All right. Well, we just wanted to show you a little bit of what they do when they participate in Math Counts. And so, thank you to everyone who supports it. We're so grateful for your, for your support. We are now going to have you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm gonna step over here.
Thank you so much for coming and for working so hard and doing so well and making state. We are all very proud of you. And if you step over, you're the best part of our meeting. It's going to go downhill from here. And I could solve for t all night, literally, so, you know. So you're gonna come over here and I'm gonna hand you each a certificate and then you get some D-39 merch as well. It's very exciting.
Thank you all for being here and for sharing your joy with us. Fantastic.
Oh, and then I should have said you can then go out this door and meet your parents in the lobby, but I'm sure they want to see you get your certificates first. So Joseph Shu. You go and then here, wait, don't forget your merch. Need like another hand.
I got you.
Thank you so much. Eric Wang. There's yours. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Albert Lin. Good job. Congratulations. And Ava Yao. Thank you so much. And Sophie Zheng. Thank you. Congrats. Congrats. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here.
That was fun. Okay. Let me direct your attention to the beautiful works of art behind us. The artwork on display this month in the boardroom and in the foyer is a wonderful sampling of 1st through 8th grade student work. Every March, we observe Youth Art Month by showcasing the talented student artwork created across the district. Youth Art Month emphasizes the value of art education for all children and encourages quality school programs. And I will just add an editorial that if you click on the QR codes, magical things happen. Like, it's really cool. It's about 30-second videos of all this art that they made into like a story. So that's worth your time. Now, I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the February 26th, 2024 Board of Education Regular Meeting.
I move to approve the February 26th, 2024 Board of Education Regular Meeting Minutes.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes? Did we lose Lisa?
She's there.
Oh, she's there. Okay, just checking. Okay. Um, will the clerk please call the roll?
Anne Hart.
Yes.
Bonnie Kim.
Yes.
Allison Pathless.
Yes.
Amy Paling.
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Yes.
John Caesaretti.
Yes.
Erin Stone.
Yes. The motion carries. This is the first opportunity for the public to address the board. Are there any community members who wish to speak at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to board reports with our committees. We will begin with facility development. Mrs. Kim.
Thank you. The Board provided design authorization for 2025 summer construction projects. The primary project involves adding air conditioning to the remaining 1st floor classrooms at WJHS. These 12 or 13 classrooms would be the last classrooms in the district to have AC added. The entire construction team would like to start the design process in a few months, which would allow an early pre-order of equipment with long lead times. The end goal is to provide the best chance of having the project fully completed in August 2025. In spring 2022, Nicholas and Associates had estimated the project to cost 2.9 million. Thank you.
Thank you. School Finance, Mr. Caesaretti.
Thank you, President Stone. So at the School Finance Committee, or Committee of the Whole, the 2024-2025 student fees were reviewed annually. The Board reviews and approves the various student fees for the next school year. Mr. Boltmeier provided a presentation reviewing fee options. The types of fees reviewed include the instructional materials fee, instrumental music fee, lunch fee, transportation fee, and athletics fees, which are presented for approval on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Strategy, Mrs. Schneider-Fabes. Oh, wait, unmute yourself. Yes, you are still on mute from our end. There we go.
There you go. Now, okay, sorry, I have a new computer. I apologize.
It's okay.
Little operator error. So District 39 is committed to cultivating a supportive and inclusive learning community that's responsive to social, emotional, and behavioral needs of students and community members. This commitment is well reflected within their work, embodied in the strategic plan, and has been a significant area of focus and action throughout the past three years. Two key ways in which progress in this area are through culture and climate joint leadership team and through learning about school climate. Dr. Kremiscoli presented a brief overview of this work and an update to the Board and community at large.
Thank you. We are moving on to our liaison reports. Community Review Committee, or CRC, Mrs. Hart.
Sure. I attended the CRC meeting on March 12th. As a reminder, the CRC focus this year is on the value of free play in education. The CRC subgroups are working on draft reports in preparation for their next meeting and they are on track to present findings and recommendations to the school board in May.
Thank you. Ed Foundation, that was me. The Ed Foundation had a meeting here on February 28th. They recounted a number of recent successful fundraisers that they have had. They discussed the upcoming vote on GRIP grants, which is happening this coming Wednesday. Upcoming events are Pickle Night, which is April 27th, and Movie Night, which is May 17th. And their next meeting is this Wednesday, the 20th. District Strategic Advisory Team, or DSAT, Mrs. Paling and Mrs. Pathless.
I can give a brief update about that. For those who might not know, DSAT is a group made up of teachers, staff, administrators, and parents across the district who meet multiple times a year to provide feedback on the progress of the strategic plan. So we met on February 8th and were able to review and discuss the updates in each goal area, and then we met in small groups to discuss one goal in particular in a smaller group. So we provide, the DSAT provided feedback to the administrators, who used that input to prepare their very detailed update that they provided for the board at last month's meeting.
Thank you. The Village, or sorry, the Willmet Village Intergovernmental Cooperation Working Group, Mrs. Kim and Mrs. Schneider-Fabes.
I'll take this one this month. So the group met on March 4th, March 4th at Mallinckrodt. We did a couple things. We got consensus on a proposed marketing campaign about mental health, both normalize it and help people figure out where they could get mental health services. And then we determined who would take ownership of the coordinating biannual meetings between social service providers. And the Village is going to do that. So every six months, there will be a meeting of social service providers in the Village to share information and coordinate. And finally, we decided who would take over leadership of the committee in the year ahead. And that is going to be, um, oh my God, I'm having a senior moment. That is going, Dr. Kremiscoli, you want to help me out? Oh, it's going to be Gail Eisenberg, moving ahead. Sorry about that. And I think, was there anything I missed?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then I'll turn it over to you. Yep.
Thank you. The Willmet Community Special Education Agreement, or WICSI, Mrs. Paling.
Yes, so WICSI, the advisory committee met earlier today. We reviewed and accepted the fiscal year 23 financial report, the 2025 fiscal budget and calendar, as well as the projected expenditures and costs for fiscal year 25 and the year-to-date activity through February of this year.
Thanks. The Insurance Advisory Committee, Mrs. Pathless.
Thank you. The Insurance Advisory Committee met on Monday, March 11th. In attendance were union leaderships, Dr. Kremiscoli, Mr. Boltmeier, Dr. Glawacki, Catherine Looney, Lonnie, I don't know how you pronounce her name, who works for Alara Group and supports Cooperative 90s, which is our insurance cooperative, led the discussion. We discussed where premiums are headed for the new insurance year and possible plan changes to assist in mitigating premium increases. The Cooperative 90s Board will vote at their next meeting on April 4th to determine plan changes and premium costs. D-39 will run open enrollment at the end of May or start of June before the end of the school year. And just a reminder that the insurance benefit plan year runs from September 1st through August 31st.
Thank you. Illinois Association of School Boards, also Mrs. Pathless.
Yeah, just a quick update. The IASB has recently published a digest of state laws affecting Illinois public schools and enacted, that were enacted in 2023. It's on their website if anyone wants to take a look at that. One other note that I saw is that the IASB Government Relations Team would love school board members to join their advocacy ambassador program. This is a program designed to build relationships between school board members and state and federal legislatures. There are already 87 members that joined just this year, but if anybody wants to join, there is room.
All right. Thank you. And then also, Mrs. Pathless, with the legislative update.
Right, 3 for 3 legislative update. The Illinois Legislature is, legislature is in session, but all notable bills are still in committee or have not even made it to committee. And given the election tomorrow, there were many extensions requested and granted. So they're, they're kind of on hold a little bit. A reminder that tomorrow is an election day and just a reminder that we're continuing to work with EdRed and other avenues to advocate to allow schools to choose not to be polling places. And then finally, just a little update as it relates to the Cook County Commissioners' Paid Leave Act. This is the one where you probably remember that the Cook County Commissioners passed a paid leave act resolution in December. And as of December 31st, 2023, employees in Cook County can earn at least one hour of paid leave for every 40 hours worked. This, there is no exemption in that particular ordinance for schools and that is contradicting a state law that's on the books right now. So last week, the Cook County Board of Commissioners voted to hold the implementation of their unique paid leave act until January 1st of 2025. So this delays but does not eliminate the burden imposed by the commissioners on, on school districts. So in the meantime, proponents are working to try to find a solution that would exempt school districts from that law.
Okay, thank you. We're moving on to information items. Dr. Kremiscoli.
Yes, thank you. Excuse me. Under written communication, the Board received written communication from Natalie Hudson, Assistant Principal at Prairie Trails School in Mount Prospect, recognizing Kristin Johnson, our LEAP Coordinator for unmatched level of collaboration and support, sharing resources, meeting with staff, and allowing observations of our LEAP classrooms at Ramona. Under administrative announcements from myself and our staff, we have our K-4 parent-teacher conferences and our 5-8 professional development day coming up. We're excited to host both. Our spring conferences with K-4 families will occur at the end of this week. Our teachers always work hard to ensure that these are meaningful opportunities for connections and partnership, and I, I hope that our families will benefit from and appreciate the time connecting with our teachers. And meanwhile, our 5-8 teachers and staff will spend, bless you, Friday together, engaged in professional development and collaboration. This too is a very beneficial day for all of us across the district and we appreciate the Board's support for this time, both in connecting with families and in professional development activities. We celebrated our Math Counts students earlier today and I'd also like to acknowledge our Science Olympiad students. On March 9th, the Willmet Junior High School Science Olympiad team took first place at the Harper College Regional, one of the toughest in the state. Several students teamed up. Eric and Sophie teamed up to win the tower event while Nate and Gargy won the Reach for the Stars competition. 13 team members earned medals at the meet. They were led by Michelle Ren, who came away with four. Eric Frank, Elisha, Gargy, Aparna, and Sophie earned three apiece. Nate, Bohan, Madeline, Julia, and Yixian each took home two medals while Henry added one more in meteorology. The junior varsity team also competed at Harper College and won a pair of competitions. Katie and Benji took first place in the fossils category while Dahlia and Kavia won the crime busters category. All of these sound like so much fun, don't they? Katie and Benji each received four medals from the meet while Kavia, Dahlia, and Ainis took home three. The WJHS varsity team moves on to the state meet, which will be hosted by the University of Illinois on April 20th. I know that's why President Stone is wearing her University of Illinois shirt today.
Absolutely.
Jersey, excuse me, on April 20th in Champaign. The results of the regional are a true testament to how hard our students have been working since mid-October to, to gain these accomplishments. So kudos to all of those students. We can't wait to cheer you on at the state meets. Spring break is coming up, we all know this, but it will be next week. We're all looking forward to a very well-deserved break. Our students, faculty, and staff have worked incredibly hard in the first three quarters of the school year. We know that there is much more to learn and do in that fourth quarter, but we're appreciative for a little bit of a respite here for a week and then we'll come back for a strong fourth quarter. And then finally, Freedom of Information Act, as we always report to the Board. The district received a FOIA request from Michelle Jones of Quadient in Milford, Connecticut, requesting postage equipment, purchase, and lease information. And that concludes, excuse me, our administrative announcements.
Thank you. Are we ready to move on to annual business?
We are. The first order of business is an announcement regarding our reduction in force, in force, excuse me. This is the point in the school year when we make staffing decisions for the upcoming school year. I will allow Dr. Glawacki to provide the Board with a brief update.
Yes, this process happens annually. It begins at this meeting where we ask you later down in the agenda to pass through resolution, a reduction in force for our Group 1 staff, which is our part-time staff, as well as any staff hired directly to support a teacher on the staff position. And so, the, the staff members noted on the resolution are just that, long-term substitutes, part-time staff. And, you know, as our needs become more known to us for next school year, we'll be looking to see how we might support the needs of the students in those areas.
We're very grateful for the services and support performed by these, these faculty members and we're eager to continue our staffing plan so that we can make decisions regarding the upcoming school year.
Moving on to 2024-2025 student fees.
Yes, I believe that Cory is going to share a brief update. Various student fees were reviewed and discussed at the March Committee of the Whole meeting with five types of fees recommended for increase for the upcoming school year. The Board did a very detailed review at the Committee of the Whole meeting, so I would invite those who are interested in that more detailed review to watch and review the materials for that meeting. Tonight Cory will review the outcomes of those discussions and later on the agenda, the Board will be asked to approve these recommended fees this evening. Mr. Boltmeier?
Yep. So in the board packet that the Board will be voting on will be the fee for each of the areas where there's a fee and then there's 10 years of history for anyone who's curious. I'm going to touch quickly on each of the five areas that we discussed and have a recommendation for an increase leading into next year. The first is the instructional materials fee, aligning with our plan to increase that fee annually by CPI. We have a 6.5% increase. And then a little bit different for the lower grades, 1st through 4th grade would get an additional $50 added to the fee, which is representative of the cost for insurance related to iPads. That same amount had previously, in prior years, been added to the 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th grade fees. So that brings a more consistent approach. And then two other things of note, the 3rd grade fee is slightly higher than for 2nd and 4th because of a small recorder fee and 7th grade is slightly higher than 8th due to a lock and, and uniform for PE. Similar to the instructional materials, the instrumental music fee, the recommendation is to increase that by 6.5% for 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th. The amounts are shown here. One thing to keep in mind, this fee had remained flat for seven consecutive years. Our lunch fee, I have some information on this slide that shows what the actual fees charged in fiscal year 23, what the actual deficit was, and then we're showing 81% covered. Then we have a similar percent covered with, with the budget in place for fiscal year 24. The recommendation is for roughly a 9.5% increase to the fee for next school year. That does show that we would make some progress on the deficit and also increase that percent covered by fees. On the transportation rider fee, similarly, we have the actual riding fees. similarly, we have the actual writing fees for fiscal year twenty-three. We covered sixty-two and a half percent. We have an estimate for the current fiscal year of just over sixty-four. The recommendation is for a twenty percent increase in the fee for the upcoming school year, which would allow us to make some, uh, projected to make some progress, uh, up to seventy-three percent. And just at the bottom, more refer, reference information, in case someone was wondering, you know, what would it take to even go farther than seventy-three percent? You have rows that show what it, what the fees might need to be at current ridership levels to hit an eighty percent, ninety, or even a hundred percent. And then the last area that has recommendation for change is our athletic fees. Uh, four percent increase to each of the sports. Um, that is reflective of, for this current year, with the new WA contract, um, each of the coaching stipends was increased, got a four percent increase. Um, this will allow us to, uh, keep that deficit very small, or, or, we're really approaching that break-even point for athletics overall. So that is all of the, uh, fees recommended for approval later this evening.
Thank you. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Okay. This would be the second opportunity for the audience to address the board, but I'm seeing no public in the audience, so we will continue with our agenda. The next order of business is the consent agenda under the action items. Are there any items that the board would like pulled from the consent agenda? Okay, Mrs. Hart, please proceed with the motions.
Motion to approve the personnel report dated March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Motion to approve the student fees for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year as contained in Exhibit A of this evening's report. Motion to approve the accounts payable for bills listed between February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, and March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four in the following amounts. Educational fund, eight hundred thirty thousand, five hundred eighty-four dollars, ninety-nine cents. O and M fund, ninety-six thousand, one hundred thirty-three dollars, ten cents. Debt service, four hundred seventy-five dollars. Transportation, two hundred thirty-seven, eight hundred ninety dollars, twenty-nine cents. Capital projects, one hundred seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred fifty-six dollars. For a total, all funds, one million, three hundred forty-two thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. Motion to approve the manual checks issued between February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, and March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four in the following amounts. Educational fund, nine hundred eighty thousand, four hundred forty-four dollars, fifty cents. O and M fund, one hundred five thousand, eight hundred fifty-four dollars, sixty cents. Debt service, four hundred seventy-five dollars. Transportation, seven hundred forty-one dollars, thirty-eight cents. Capital projects, one hundred seven thousand, five hundred eighty-one dollars, sixty-eight cents. For a total, all funds, one million, one hundred ninety-five thousand, ninety-seven dollars, sixteen cents.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Allison Pathless?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes?
Yes.
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Amy Palin?
Yes.
Aaron Stone?
Yes. The motion carries.
Aaron, I believe there is one more motion.
Yes, that was separate.
It was separate.
Yes, thank you, sorry. Um, I seek a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the honorable dismissal of teachers.
Motion to approve the attached resolutions authorizing the honorable dismissal of teachers.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Allison Pathless?
Yes.
Amy Palin?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes?
Yes.
Aaron Stone?
Yes. The A's have it, motion carries. Uh, we're moving on to conference items, um, any old business? I have one thing. Um, we currently do not have any board members signed up to go to the Ed Foundation meeting on April twenty-fourth. So check your calendars, see if that works. And you can either let me know or sign up, or maybe sign up and let me know, just so I know we got it covered. But we got some time on that. And then any other old business? Any new business? Any good in welfare? Mrs. Kim?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say that, um, a few weeks ago, I had the chance to, um, go to, back to Mackenzie to see the Variety Show, which is an annual fundraiser that the parents put on. Um, and, um, a hundred ninety parents participated in this, um, fundraiser, and it was so exciting, you could see how excited the kids were. And, um, and anyways, I just wanted to say that having participated in it myself, what a great community builder it is and continues to be, because I went, um, also on alumni night, and there were so many alums, which are parents, um, whose kids have graduated from Mackenzie, who have all come together, and, you know, we all continue to see each other regularly just because of that show. So anyways, um, it was fantastic, and I'm so excited that it's continuing on.
Nice, thank you. I think I read about that in the Record North Shore. I think they said this was the most amount of parents who have ever been in it, which is amazing. So yeah, thank you for sharing that.
Lot of great energy.
Yes, nice. Mrs. Palin, yes?
Very quick plug, just for all the emails we get from IASB, their local trainings. I was interested in the North Cook Division meeting, they talked about the teacher shortage. And it was amazing. It was just such great research they presented, um, a deep dive into what was causing the problem, some possible ideas, and it was great to meet other, uh, board members and administrators from local schools. So if anything piques your curiosity, well worth it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss, to discuss specific personnel, special education, individual student matters, and semi-annual review of executive session minutes?
Motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss special, specific personnel, special education, um, and the discussion of meeting minutes.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Allison Pathless?
Yes.
Amy Palin?
Yes.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes?
Yes.
John Caesaretti?
Yes.
Anne Hart?
Yes.
Bonnie Kim?
Yes.
Aaron Stone?
Yes, motion carries. We are now adjourned to executive session, and the time is seven thirty-eight PM.